I'd like to call the October 12th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business is invocation by our county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and good morning. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please continue to give our leaders wisdom and insight as they make decisions today. As we declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we pray that our community dedicates themselves to be supportive of survivors and to play an active role in ending domestic violence. Please heal and protect our community as we continue to struggle with COVID-19. May your blessings always be upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, excuse me, this morning, join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Our pledge by Assistant County Manager, Ms. Sherri Slater.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Sheriff Miller, our elected official this year today. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. We ask all in attendance to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments during the public comment period should be limited to five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control of. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner's comment period on the agenda unless at the end of the meeting. Now I would entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Tell me.
I have a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any item any commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda and put at the end of the meeting for discussion?
Motion approved.
Hear none, entertain a motion. I think we have one.
Thank you.
We have a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now move to the commissioner comment period, which is item number three, I mean the public comment period, which is item number three. Has anyone signed up? Ms. Russell?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up this morning for public comment.
Okay, we have moved now to item four, which is proclamations, and I'll turn that over to County Manager, Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This morning, we have two proclamations that will be read into the record and presented. Our first one is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I will first read this into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month 2020. Whereas domestic violence transcends racial, ethnic, and socio-economic borders, its perpetrators harm their victims, endanger children, traumatize families, and threaten communities. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and abuse. And whereas breaking this vicious criminal cycle requires not only the strength of survivors, but also the support and participation of community members. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to shine a light on this violation of the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse, pledge to ensure every victim of domestic violence knows that they are not alone, and foster supportive communities that help survivors seek justice and enjoy full and healthy lives. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and calls upon all citizens to promote the safety and liberty of the women, men, and children who are subjected to violent, intimidating, or controlling behavior at the hands of those closest to them. Presented on this, the fifth day of October 2020, by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, I believe the chairman has requested that Commissioner Tim Foster will present this proclamation, and representatives from Onslow Women's Center are going to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, and we welcome Gary and his team up tonight in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In particular, it's, I think it's important to note that each month at the Onslow County Women's Center, they receive over 900 crisis calls. They have 2,400-plus hours of services provided, and over 3,500 in addition to those numbers. So the fact that this is very important to our community, the numbers speak for themselves. And I will let Mr. Danford come up and speak and recognize him for all his work and service to Onslow County.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, County Commissioners. One of the things Onslow Women's Center always wants to do is thank the commissioners for your support each year. That support is vital to our success. And I know you know this because I've told you before, but because of the way you support us, it enables us to be able to receive the largest grant that we can receive from the Governor's Crime Commission. We could not do it if we did not get the support of the community, and one of the requirements is the support from our county financially, so thank you for that. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The proclamation, couldn't have said it any better, so I can't improve on that too much other than say, we'll continue to make awareness this month. This Thursday is our candlelight vigil. We've done this for nearly 30 years. I encourage you to come out. It's at 6:00 at Riverwalk off of Court Street. Please try to show up if you can. We'd love to have you out for our candlelight vigil. I think it'll be extremely impactful, and it is a way for us to make the community aware of the devastation that domestic violence plays in the role of families every day. So thank you so much for having us out here and for your support. And please, if you need us calling us, I will say we have another event real quick. It's called Dancing Stars. It's our ninth annual. We've had people on this commission that has participated before, and we have another this year. So I'm not sure if he'll dance his way back up there, but Commissioner Foster, we do appreciate what you have done and what you were doing to support us this year. So look forward to that. You can go to our website to get details and sign up so you can get it through pay-per-view. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do to our community. And if you would like to write a check to the Foster Cubus Dance Team, I will dance back to the days for that, so we appreciate the support and everything. Thank you.
Don't do that again.
Our next proclamation after our dancing break there, which was wonderful, thank you, Commissioner Foster, is for National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. And I will read that into the record to get us started. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, National Cybersecurity Awareness Month 2020. Whereas Onslow County recognizes that it has a vital role in identifying, protecting and protecting its citizens from and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact to our individual and collective security and privacy. And whereas critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems and technology to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas the hashtag #BeCyberSmart campaign serves as the National Cybersecurity Public Awareness Campaign implemented through a coalition of private companies, nonprofit and governmental organizations, as well as academic institutions working together to increase the understanding of cyber threats and empowering the American public to be safer and more secure online. And whereas the National Institute of Standards and Technology cybersecurity framework has been developed as a free resource to help organizations, large and small, both public and private, improve their cybersecurity practices through a practical approach to addressing evolving threats and challenges. And whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role to play, an awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of Onslow County's information, infrastructure, and economy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges October 2020 as National Cyber Awareness Month throughout Onslow County and encourages our citizens to stay safe online. Presented this fifth day of October 2020 by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, I believe Chairman Bright has asked for Commissioner Robin Knapp to present the proclamation to representatives from Information Technology Services. So if we have someone from I T S, we have Mr. Glenn, our I T S Director, who is going to accept that, and I will pass it over to you.
Yes, sir. Cybersecurity is very important. You know, coming from a law enforcement background at the federal level, you know, it's very critical, the infrastructure. Get down to Guantanamo Bay, we had a very high threat potential there in Guantanamo with insurgents, and it was always good to know that we had cybersecurity folks that were always trying to counter malware, penetration by foreign agents and stuff like that. And people don't realize that everything that we do now is in a computer system somewhere, something that, you know, your bank account, your personal information, all kinds of stuff. And it takes a team effort, like Glenn, for example, and his crew, to do the things that they do to make sure that your information is safeguarded, because let's face it, we rely on that. And we can never underestimate the danger that cyber threats pose to everybody in the United States. I mean, it's, there's people out there hacking in and hacking in and hacking into systems all day long, stealing identities and trying to get our nation's secrets. It's a constant battle. And I applaud the efforts of Glenn and his staff and the things that they do because they're constantly making changes, changing passwords, all kinds of stuff. And I just can't say enough for our cyber section here in Onslow County. We have the best in the country, I think. I think you guys recently awarded a award.
A national award.
A national award for their efforts, and they recognize Onslow County. So very proud of Glenn and his staff, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
So cybersecurity has, the threat landscape has increased 600% since the pandemic started. 92% of these threats come in through email. So I urge our citizens and our employees alike to really treat every email with some suspicion, because when you don't, your own privacy, your own security, your own financial situation can be affected as well as the communities. So thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we'll move on now to item B, 2020 Incidents and Trends. Ms. Chrissy Hoover, our Health Director, will present that to us.
Good morning, gentlemen. This morning, what we have for you is the 2020 Incidents and Trends, and we don't request any action on this, but we appreciate the opportunity to bring this review to you to fulfill some of the requirements of our accreditation standards. So in terms of looking at our communicable disease trends, surveillance is an important part of public health. It's one of the cornerstones of public health, and it fits into this assessment section of the, kind of the, what we call the wheel of public health. It's all of our 10 essential health services. Reporting this data allows us to identify any emerging trends in our health data and in hopes of controlling and preventing the spread of such communicable diseases. So this presentation will review the trends and the data from the past year. Whenever we look at how we do disease reporting, it comes from hospitals, laboratories, schools, local providers. They report it to us at the local health department. We report it up to the Division of Public Health, who in turn passes it on up to the CDC. Whenever we think about all of the diseases and trends that we'll be reviewing today, you need to know that there is a big difference in looking at case counts and looking at case rates. All of the data that we'll be sharing with you is going to show North Carolina's data on the left-hand side of each graph, Onslow County on the right-hand side of each graph, and will show you the trend from 2017 through 2019, year over year. All of these are in terms of case rate, or cases per hundred thousand, to allow us to be able to compare Onslow County side by side with the state of North Carolina and to see how we compare. So first, we'll look at STD, HIV, and AIDS trends. So chlamydia cases certainly have trended up over the last three years for Onslow County. You can see a slight upward trend for the state of North Carolina, but certainly not as dramatic as what we have seen. Whenever we think about this, you need to know that, you know, there's more volatility whenever we deal with smaller numbers. Certainly, the numbers in Onslow County are not small, but whenever we think about it as, in comparison to the state, we are, we are quite, quite small in comparison. Chlamydia is our most commonly reported communicable disease in Onslow County, and it is important that we continue to work to prevent the transmission of chlamydia because it can lead to infertility and difficulty in conception when left untreated. Moving over to gonorrhea, similarly, you can see that North Carolina has experienced a little bit of an upward trend, and we kind of bounced back and forth, but we are right there alongside where North Carolina is. So really, there's no, no significant difference in the gonorrhea cases that we're seeing in Onslow County compared to the state of North Carolina. Over the past couple of years, North Carolina and everyone has become more concerned about gonorrhea cases that are resistant to some of the normal drugs that we would use to treat them. And so we'll talk a little bit later about the emergence of drug resistance and how that is a public health issue and something that we're working to try to prevent. Syphilis cases is the next that we'll look at, and we rank a little bit lower than the state in terms of our syphilis cases. As you can see, we kind of bounce up and down a little bit, but overall, we are below the state. And then HIV and AIDS cases. HIV cases are shown in the blue bars, AIDS cases in the orange bars. We saw a significant increase from 2018 to 2019 in terms of HIV cases. When we considered, is this because of an increase in testing or is this an increase in true prevalence and burden of disease in our community? We reached out to our local hospitals and looked at our test numbers, and we did not find a difference in the number of tests that were being performed, but we did find that more cases were diagnosed. So this, this is a little bit concerning, and it's certainly something that we want to keep our eye on moving forward. In terms of tuberculosis, this is very encouraging that Onslow County saw no active tuberculosis cases in calendar year 2019. Tuberculosis overall continues to be a disease that we see. It's not, you know, it's not the disease of the wild, wild west or something that's no longer there. North Carolina ranks 24th in the nation in terms of tuberculosis, so it is still a significant issue for us to look at, and we work in public health to make sure that we identify it early and try to eradicate it. And it's, it's very encouraging that we had zero cases in 2019. Next, we have vaccine-preventable diseases. What you don't see on this graph, and is important to acknowledge, is that we had no cases of measles, mumps, no cases of rubella, no tetanus, no polio, no diphtheria, no cholera, and no meningococcal meningitis. They are all vaccine-preventable diseases, and that is encouraging. And we want to encourage the public to continue to be vaccinated against any disease where there isn't effective vaccine. And those are, those are all ones that we didn't even bother to list because we haven't seen them in Onslow County, and that's a very good thing. What you do see here, both the trend for the state and Onslow County in these gray bars is chronic hepatitis C, or chronic hepatitis B, I'm sorry. Hepatitis B has no cure. It does lead to liver disease. So you can get hepatitis B and you can, you can, you can get over it in that it is not active, but it can be reactivated later in life. And that is what we see here with these gray bars with chronic hepatitis B. Other things that we should note on here is that the influenza deaths that we see are adult influenza deaths. There have been no pediatric influenza deaths, but that is certainly something that we monitor each year, and it's something that we will monitor carefully this year as we deal with both coronavirus and flu during this flu season. Looking at multi-drug resistant organisms, this is something that's fairly new for the state to monitor. So the first year that the state monitored carbapenem-resistant enterobacteriaceae, or CRE, was in calendar year 2019. And you see that the state had 241 cases statewide. In Onslow County, we had three. This doesn't seem like a very big number. Three seems like a very small number, but whenever we think about the fact that it only takes one of these very resistant organisms to be very devastating to a long-term care facility, to individuals that work in healthcare, or the patients that they serve in healthcare, we want to make sure that we highlight the significance of multi-drug resistant organisms in our community. This orange bar here was a very resistant form of Staph aureus. Staph aureus is a skin organism, lives on all of our skins, but this is a strain of staph that is resistant to vancomycin, which is the main drug that is used to treat staph. Really, whenever you get one of these organisms that's listed here, the candidaris, staph aureus, or CRE, they have developed a resistance to the point that there is nothing that treats them, and quite often, these cases end in death. So it's very important that we keep an eye on this and that we are supporting our partners in healthcare in terms of preventing these types of organisms or the transmission of these types of organisms in their facilities. Enteric pathogens, this includes some of our foodborne pathogens, and the takeaway message from this slide are the tall blue bars. So these are our salmonella cases. We average about 100 cases of salmonella each year, and we are no different than other coastal North Carolina counties, but that is a coastal North Carolina trend, is that we see more salmonella in this area of the state than, than others, other areas of the state see. The other diseases that you would see listed here, the next most common is campylobacter, but when we get down to campylobacter, we're only looking at about a dozen cases each year that we see. Our other diseases of concern include hepatitis C, the acute strain or the acute version of hepatitis C, invasive group A strep, and chronic hep C. On our vaccine-preventable diseases slide is where we had our other versions of hepatitis. Hepatitis C is still not vaccine-preventable, but it is certainly something that we are concerned about and we want to monitor carefully. We have hepatitis C, the chronic hepatitis C is shown with the secondary axis so that we can show them all together. And overall, we see more group A strep than the state does, but not, not consecutively. We can see that we had a slight trend up. We really haven't seen more on the whole, but invasive group A strep is one that we see only a handful of each year, usually less than a half a dozen. Vectorborne pathogens, this is much like our vaccine-preventable disease. What you don't see on this slide are any cases of West Nile virus, no cases of Eastern equine encephalitis, no Zika, no dengue, and no chikungunya. This is really a testament to the good work that our mosquito control staff do here in the county. We have very few cases of any mosquito-borne disease. This malaria case is an imported case. It is not locally acquired, no locally acquired cases of malaria in the state of North Carolina. The other two cases that we see here, ehrlichiosis and Lyme disease, are typically tick-borne diseases, and so this is where we encourage the public to wear deep whenever they're going to be out in the woods and make sure that they are very mindful of how you can pick up bugs and pick up pathogens that go with it. Rabies and animal bites, this is only Onslow County data. There really is no comparison statewide, but the take-home messages from this is that we do see an increase in the number of animal bites throughout the county. This certainly speaks to the need for our animal control department and the, and the good work that they do in preventing any, any transmission of rabies and promoting responsible pet ownership. Rabies testing, you can see that we only have a few cases of rabies each year. It can be from a variety of animals, raccoons, fox, bats, occasionally a cat, but overall, this is something that we look at very closely, and whenever we have the opportunity to have rabies vaccination days done, that is certainly something that we want to encourage and promote. Emerging issues, I didn't know if you thought you might get out of here without hearing me talk a little bit about coronavirus, but certainly whenever we're doing this presentation next year, if we looked at the total number of communicable diseases that the health department has processed, certainly next year will be a completely different story. Where the, the most common disease that we probably took in and processed will be coronavirus next year. So this has certainly been a tremendous impact on our operations. We anticipate a vaccine coming out. We don't know exactly when or, you know, how, how soon that might be, but it's certainly something that we are planning for and moving forward with getting ourselves ready for. The importance of healthy living, you know, a lot of the behaviorally-based disease transmission that we see, it can be prevented by awareness, education, and then personal behavior modification. Multi-drug resistant pathogens, even though there's only a few that the state of North Carolina focuses on, it only takes one to devastate a community, and so it's certainly important that we highlight the implications of these and work closely with our healthcare community to prevent the transmission. Vaccine-preventable diseases are always a cornerstone of public health. This fall, we have done a handful of outreaches to the students and to, to help our schools keep those kids in school as they got ready to transition back into class. And we will do the same whenever we receive the coronavirus to make sure that we are making that very available to our public. And then the increasing incidence of animal bites that we have seen, certainly making sure that those animals are vaccinated and promoting the responsible pet ownership are things that we want to, to make sure everyone is appreciating in our community. Do you all have any questions for me?
Yeah, I got one, Chrissy. The COVID-19, last week, we had a spike in positive cases, and we sort of trend into the state average, the same. Is that, is that a spike or is it a second wave or are we at, have we reached our peak yet, or is that part of the peak, or do you have a handle on that?
Yeah, I think it's too early for us to say. Certainly, last week, we, we had a new high on Monday, and we thought, oh, maybe this is just an influx from over the weekend. You know, typically, kind of the way that things operate for us is that our staff works six days a week. On Sundays, we just receive positives. We don't do outreach, you know, kind of back out to the public. So Mondays are typically our heaviest days. So we, we saw a new high on Monday, and then Tuesday was worse than Monday, Wednesday was worse than Tuesday, and it continued in that path. On Friday evening, whenever we left going home, we were trying to get everything ready for the Saturday team that was going to come into work, and I was so surprised whenever we had had such a large number of cases on Friday, and there were, you know, about two dozen that we hadn't even touched yet because there had been such a tremendous increase in what we were seeing. I think that, you know, we're not unlike the rest of Region 8, which is southeastern North Carolina. We're all seeing this increase right now. Whether this is the second wave or whether, you know, who knows what that might look like, we have no real way of knowing when we will hit our, our peak again. What we do know right now is that we are in a period of rapid intensification, and we're doing everything we can to respond to those cases, to contact, trace them just as quickly as we can, and to carefully monitor the situation. When we look at our seven-day rolling average, we're at about 45 cases that we're averaging each day, so whenever you take out the, the big terrible days like Mondays and kind of, you know, look at it in a week's period, that's the highest that we have, that we have been. Up to this point, we had looked at end of July, beginning of August, being our highest seven-day rolling average, and we were around 31 then, so this week has certainly been an intense week.
Does that mean the number of cases meant also a greater number of hospitalizations and length of stay and?
We haven't really seen the, the wave of hospitalizations. You know, hospitalizations and deaths are what we consider to be the lagging metrics whenever it comes to coronavirus. So we haven't seen a, a big uptick in the proportion that we see hospitalized, but we should expect that. Anytime that we know that we have more cases circulating in the community, we expect that the, the hospitalizations will follow, and unfortunately, that deaths may follow with that. So it is certainly something that we want to do everything we can to get in front of and to take all the steps that we can to try to limit the transmission now.
I got a question, though, but, you know, we talked about this before, you know, you have the PCR swab test and you have the rapid test, and I think a lot of the positive tests that we've been reporting out is because due to the fact that the state has now included the that the state has now included the rapid test, which has what, about an 80, 85% accuracy rate? Whereas the PCR test is almost 100%, about 98%. So do you think that that's part of the reason too because we're including the rapid test as well? Because I knew there was an influx and we knew, and I talked to Sharon, that we knew that we were going to get positive, more positive results because now they're including the rapid test. I mean, would you say that's a true statement?
So certainly whenever we're looking at the data and we have treated all of those cases as true cases, you know, during the whole stay. So we have, we've kind of separated them into two groups the entire duration of this event. But certainly what we're experiencing now is not just due to including antigens in our case numbers. I think that one of the things that is important to know is that the availability of testing has been tremendously enhanced by the availability of antigen testing. This is kind of a countertop test, point of care test that can be done in any of these doctors' offices. And it's a good thing that they have testing availability and have it convenient for individuals to access. But certainly, that's one of the things that's increasing the number of tests that are performed in the county. But the increase that we're seeing in case incidents or the number of new cases is, might be due to the increased capacity, testing capacity that we have. But certainly, the intensity that we're seeing now, I think, is probably more than just that.
Well, I also understand, you know, we talk about the antigen test and I know there's antigen tests out there to see if you have the antibodies, et cetera. But we still don't really know everything about this disease because, you know, we think that if you get your antibody or the antigens in you, that you're okay, that you've been exposed before. But yet we have a person that tested positive and then tested negative and then 13 weeks later tested positive again. So we really, I mean, it's a hard thing to define.
Right, yeah, we're kind of learning this a lot as we go. And so the first, the first two cases that we saw where we had what we considered to be repeat infections, the states kind of walked it back. And so, you know, at the same time that we're seeing it, everyone else in the states is dealing with the same type of issue. And so initially, we had said, okay, if you test positive and then after 90 days, you test positive again, we're going to call that a reinfection. Now they have labeled coronavirus a lifetime disease, meaning that you can only be counted one time as a positive case. What the, I guess, the hair that you have to split with that is that if you are positive again beyond that 90 day period, you still have to isolate and public health still has to follow you and kind of clear you again, but you don't get recounted in the case numbers. And so there's all these shades of gray that we end up with in terms of how we monitor this and how we kind of keep track and count different cases. But now if you are a positive again, after having an initial positive, even if it's been beyond 90 days, you're not counted as a new or an index case, an incident case, but you are required to re-isolate after 90 days.
On our tests that we have that are recovered, how do we shape up with the recoveries compared to other counties, our size?
That's a really good question, and the answer is that we don't know. Not everyone is tracking recovered cases quite as closely as we are. In a lot of types of outbreak investigations, you don't follow individuals through clearance or through recovery. So the state has just put out estimates statewide of the number of cases that they think are cleared. There are some counties that are actually counting their cases that they clear one by one as we do. And then there are counties that are just estimating it similar to how the state does. So it's very, it's very difficult to ever get a true sense of what is the number of active cases that you're following at any one time. There's even for us, there's some delays sometimes in following up with different physicians to find out, you know, kind of how they are continuing to treat people who they might have tested again. Although retesting is not indicated, sometimes those are factors that complicate individuals' clearance.
Is there anything we can do to stop the spread other than what's being done now?
I think that, you know, as we try to relax restrictions and as the governor has eased off on some of the things that are included in the executive orders, one of the most important things that we can consider is just because now it's allowed, is it really necessary? You know, should we be doing it just because we can now do it? And I think that that personal risk assessment and personal decision making around that is really what's most important. Certainly, whenever we looked at each step of this event along the way, you know, and families had the option to send their student to school or use the remote option. It's really hard for us to give a guideline for what is going to be best for each individual or each individual family unit. And I think a lot of times, people have to do their own personal risk assessment, personal behavior assessment, and decide what's going to be best for them. But making sure that we're mindful about if we don't need to travel to Vegas, should we be traveling to Vegas just, you know, just because we can? So there's different things that we should be considering whenever we're moving forward in this event.
And last question, what's the cooperative effort? I mean, because this is a question that's asked of me frequently between Camp Lejeune and us. I mean, are they still providing information? I know they came down with the DOD mandate referencing the reporting their statistics or whatever. Are we getting true, accurate information from Camp Lejeune as you see it?
Yes, sir. I have full confidence that the base communicates with us on a daily basis and are reporting cases to us. They report cases to us for all of their service members. Quite often, we refer them out to neighboring counties whenever the individuals might live out of county. But we have a very strong working relationship with the base, and I have full confidence that we are receiving all the information that we need.
I've got one final question to let people know what, how this is taking a toll on our health department. How many people on a day-to-day basis do you have doing contact tracing and keeping up with all these positive cases? Can you share that with us?
It's no less than 15. So whenever we look at the team that we have working on this, we have six contract nurses that are assisting with us. We have two data individuals that we have brought in on a temporary contract. We have a handful of individuals that the state has assigned to Onslow County to assist us with this. But on a daily basis, there's no less than 15 individuals that are working in it. Myself and Giacomo Mauro, our nurse manager that's over there with us today, it is not a little siloed group within the health department. It is literally every member of our clinical team that is involved in this. Our environmental health division certainly has, you know, been right there in the trenches with our clinical team in terms of how we've responded to this. So and that is, that's going on the conservative side, not, you know, not including myself or the supervisory clinical staff or any of our folks from the other divisions that are there. But working like in it eight hours every day is at least 15 individuals.
Thank you.
This ain't a question, Chrissy. I want to thank you and your staff for the outstanding service that you give our citizens on this testing because we were part of that testing last Monday, most of the commissioners that chose to be tested. And I want to thank you and your staff was outstanding. It was like I'm going to say, and Jack will say the same thing, it just tickled my nose, but I noticed some other people that said, oh, it hurt. But I'm picking on somebody else that's sitting up there.
Okay, look, they said it would tickle, it did not tickle. I think you swabbed my brain when you did it.
Are you nice?
I left like it really, it made my left eye water, but it was worth it.
We want to thank your staff and everybody. It's been, it was, it was good for us. I mean, not good for us that we had to be tested, but it was good for us to know what it's all about. But your staff did an outstanding job and thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Thank you so much.
You did a good job.
Absolutely. Except for that swab test.
Item, item five, Ms. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And thank you again to Chrissy Richmond Hoover. Her team is doing an amazing job. We appreciate them. This next item is a long-term lease that we propose for your consideration to the Georgetown Renaissance Community Association. And I will tell you upfront that with our meeting being rescheduled and noticed just two days prior to business days before this, we were a little late in notifying Cynthia Watson and the rest of the Georgetown Renaissance Community Association. They wanted to be here today, but really because of our late notice, they were unable to make it. But they're very excited about this opportunity. This is a lease that we are trying to extend from 10 years to 30 years to help enable this association to meet their goals. They've already been leasing this land, it's out close to our animal shelter. And what they were wanting to do is to construct a building that would serve citizens, promote tourism, economic development, and cultural heritage education, historic preservation from the old Georgetown High School and some of the events that happened throughout the last 100 years out in that area. And when they went to get investors to try to build this building, there was a reluctance because of the length of the lease. What we have put before you today is a 30-year ground lease that has an option to purchase the property for the property tax value at the time the option to purchase would be exercised. And this is a 5.32 acre tract of land. Currently, staff estimates the tax value of the property is $399,000. We do not have any current public use for this, and we think that the historic and preservation uses that is planned by this association would be appropriate. If the resolution today approving the ground lease with the option to purchase is approved, the county will publish the contents of the resolution for 10 days prior to executing the lease because we're required to do that by law. And I'm going to read the resolution and then respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider adopting it to approve the ground lease and sign the document 10 days after the resolution's contents. And let me turn to that right quick. Do I really need to read the resolution into the record? County attorney?
I think it's part of their packet. If they have any questions, we can certainly read it.
Okay, so for the sake of brevity, it is, it appears to be a six-page resolution. Would any of you request that I read it into the record, Commissioners?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration of contract for county attorney, Ms. Russell.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let's talk about Brett now. So North Carolina General Statute 153A-114 actually requires counties to appoint a county attorney. A county attorney serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, and the county attorney is to be our legal advisor in all matters. Our current contract with Attorney Brett DeSelsis terminates at the first part of December. Brett DeSelsis is licensed and in good standing with the North Carolina State Bar. He's a partner at Newborn and DeSelsis in Jacksonville. And we do have a contract, county attorney at this time, to best utilize our taxpayer funds. He serves us on a contract basis and keeps office hours at the county, as you know. This morning, we asked you to consider a contract to secure his legal services for the county through December of 2022. And all of you have seen a copy of that contract. We respectfully request that the board consider this contract and if approved, authorize the chairman to execute the contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I want to thank the service that you've been given. It's one of the things that's key to me is that over the last 16 years, I've seen more assistance from an attorney working with us than I have in the past. I mean, we get phone calls from you constantly when there's something going on and something that's very important to the Commissioners, and that's great to us. And you have saved us money in different areas too where you would tell us basically, you don't need to pursue this, let's pursue it in another direction. So that saves money when we don't have to pay for outside attorney fees and everything. And I want to thank you for your service, it's been really good. Thank you.
I just want to say too, Brett, Brett's been fantastic. If you don't know, he has his own practice, but he's always here for the county and he's a phone call away. And he's, I know he's helped me tremendously too on some legal issues. And I respect his opinion and I respect his wisdom in which direction the board goes. It makes me feel safe when we have a problem during these closed sessions and you present your opinion. You know, I take it for gospel. And so I just want to let you know, that means a lot to me. It makes me feel comfortable in the decisions that we make based upon your opinion. So thank you.
Any further? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Keep up the good work. Include the resolutions.
We'll be voting on this again.
2020 CARES Act Grant Ordinance Amendment of Ms. Amy Davis.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. As a result of the coronavirus pandemic and its impact on local governments, the federal government established the CARES Act, which provided funding to state and local governments for expenses related to the preparation, recovery, and response to the pandemic via the Coronavirus Relief Fund. The Grant Ordinance Amendment modifies the original grant ordinance adopted on June 15th of 2020 to include the second round of funding. The ordinance as presented is in accordance with the plan that was submitted to the state. The entire amount awarded to the county is 7.3 million, and of the awarded amount, approximately 4.6 million is for salary and benefit expenses associated with the preparation, response, and recovery by the county. And the remaining 2.7 million presented on the Grant Ordinance Amendment includes the funding to municipalities for their request for funding their response efforts, as well as funding to nonprofits to operate virtual learning centers in support of distance learning for Onslow County schools. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the Grant Ordinance Amendment for the CARES Act and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Move on now to the adoption of the 2020 Emergency Operation Plan. That'd be Ms. Stacy Miles.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Emergency Operations Plan basically defines how Onslow County is prepared, responds to, and recovers from disasters of all sizes and scales. The 2020 overhaul was basically an attempt to realign our emergency operations plan with both state and federal guidance and incorporate our lessons learned from Hurricane Florence. It was over a year-long process and involved all of the responsible parties that are identified in the plan. We're respectfully requesting that the Commissioners consider adoption of the 2020 Onslow County Emergency Operations Plan. And if approved, we're asking the chairman if he would please sign the letter of proclamation for the plan.
So I have a motion and I hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We didn't have anything moved to item six, the consent agenda. So we'll move now to item seven, Ms. Russell, our county manager, for comments.
Thank you so much, Chairman, Brighton Commissioners. I appreciate you allowing me to continue to serve you. I would remind the public that we do have our Public Safety Memorial Ceremony that will be tomorrow at 10:00. But for COVID-19 this year, we're not doing that with an in-person audience. We are actually going to encourage folks to watch on Facebook Live. There will be, it will be streamed live on Facebook, and then it will also be recorded and shown a little bit later on G10. So folks can participate and honor those who protect us by watching that online with us tomorrow. In addition, I would like to reiterate that the COVID-19 numbers are looking a lot more concerning this week than they have since the beginning of the pandemic. It's really important for folks to take precautions and to think through what they're doing and to wear their mask, wash their hands, and stay away at least six feet from others. At the current time, and this is this morning's numbers, we don't have the end of the day numbers yet. We have 2,632 positive cases in Onslow County. That includes 83 newly confirmed cases that we just got in the last 48 hours or so. We did have more than 320 just last week that were confirmed. And as Chrissy mentioned, Region 8, the southeastern part of North Carolina, is seeing a large increase right now. We still in Onslow County remain as 85th out of 100 counties in our case density. So out of all the 100 counties in North Carolina, we're 85th, where number one would be worst. But just to give you something to compare to, one month ago, we were 92nd. So we have lost a little bit of ground on that, on that measurement. I also wanted to point out that in the last week, those more than 320 cases, the highest incidence- the highest incidence has been with those that are aged 19 to 40. The next highest is aged 40 to 64. So from 19 to 40-year-olds, we had 170 positive new cases. And those who are 40 to 64, we had 70 new cases. And this is all in the last week. So this is something for folks to be really mindful of. And that's all I have today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We'll move now to eight Commissioner comments, and I'll start today with Commissioner Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind folks that early voting does start this week on October 15. And just think about how great it would be if all of Onslow County's eligible voters informed themselves of the issues and the candidates and went out and expressed their right to vote. Our government works best when informed. Democratic participation is at its highest. And so I want to encourage everybody to do your part to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Move to Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to take a minute to thank Chrissy Hoover and the Health Department for all the work they're doing. Also, I know it's a, it's a challenging time to, to be in the health business. So we thank you for that. And I want to thank Brett also. You know, one of the, one of the themes of our term here has been reducing government spending. And one of the first things we did when we were, when we were organized, our first meeting was to eliminate a legal department that was costing us lots and lots of money and to hire a contract attorney in Brett that saved the county enormous amounts of money over the last three, four years. And he's done a great job in serving the county and keeping us up to date and keeping us out of trouble. So we thank you for that and hope you all have a good day. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
Just a thank you to everybody coming out this morning and a big thank you to Ms. Russell and her team. I think there's a lot of good things going on within Onslow County, Onslow County Government, and that is shown every time we have one of these meetings and one of the folks that represent Onslow County and part of your team comes to the microphone. They do a great job. And again, a big thank you to Gary Danford and the Onslow Women's Center. And if you haven't had a chance to support that charity event coming to the end of October, do so because it is huge. And that's one of the things that makes Onslow County so great is the ability to work together for these organizations to take care of our own. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Knapp, I think Ms. Hoover wants you to go by the Health Department and have that test done over again.
Not happening.
On Facebook Live.
Again, I want to thank Ms. Hoover and Sharon and everyone that's been working hard at the Health Department with this inundation of positive cases. They've been working around the clock. You know, with COVID-19, some people take it seriously, some people don't. And if you don't, if you're in that gray area, you should probably be serious about it, you know. And if you are, have, or been known to be around someone that was possibly exposed or proven to be exposed, it's your responsibility, you should get tested just for not only your sake, but for the sake of others that are around you. To me, that's critical. If you've been around somebody that's been, that's tested positive, whether you had slight contact or whatnot, it is your responsibility, not to yourself, but to your fellow citizens to get tested and your family members, plain and simple. And if you have symptoms, if you have any symptoms or flu-like symptoms like that, you know, you should get tested as well, just to make sure that you don't have COVID-19 or whatever it might be. The thing that scares me about this particular strain, because we just don't know what it does. It affects people differently with their immune system. I mean, some perfectly healthy people can get affected worse than somebody with pre-existing conditions. And we've seen that happen. I currently have a friend of mine that I haven't seen in a while, but by phone, that he is suffering with COVID-19 to the point where he can't breathe. He's been fatigued for 14 hours, can't even lift his head. And, you know, and he's in pretty good health. So that's a concerning thing for me. And you always got to be considerate and mindful of the people around you that you come in contact with, especially during this election season. Get tested just to make sure, make sure that you don't have it. And thank God, the ones that were tested here, we all tested negative, except I think I left part of my nose with the testing thing. But, but other than that, you know, thank you for coming out today. I appreciate you guys coming out on the Monday at 11 o'clock in the morning. And like Commissioner Shanahan said, it's the voting season. Get out there and vote. Whether, whatever your choices are, get out there and vote because it's important this year. Thank you.
Commissioner Price?
Last week, our kindergarten and first graders returned back to in-person instruction. So I want to thank our teachers for all the preparation that they undertook to bring those young kids back because that's vital, that those kids be back for in-person instruction. And next week, our second and third graders will return. So we're thanking those teachers in advance for all they're doing to keep those kids safe and to make sure they receive that in-person instruction, which those younger kids, they got to have it. And also, I'd like to thank Ms. Candace Bowden and Living Water Christian School for inviting me out to read to her third grade. I enjoy talking about service to your community and voting and reading a book on suffrage to those kids. I got a kick out of it. I hope they did it as well. Also, there are five early voting sites. So there's one in Richlands at the museum, there's one in Swansboro, the Civic Center, there's a Board of Elections, there's one in Sneed's Ferry, and for Jacksonville Commons. So those are the five early voting sites. So get out and vote and exercise your right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman?
I want to thank everybody that's been here, but we received some good information this evening, and I guess I can speak about it. But I won't tell you what the amount of money would be. But I understand that Alvin Barrett has found some refinancing for that detention facility of ours where we can save a load of money. Alvin's done that for the last 16 years I've been around here. He's been around myself and Commissioner Bright, Chairman Bright. It's always great when we find some way we save the citizens' money. To taxpayers, it's really a nice thing. And Brett, you've done the same thing. And Sharon, you've done some of that with some of the stuff you've done. And I want to thank Julie and the rest of our staff. I mean, they do a good job. I mean, Julie always herds us around like a bunch of cats, and I think she keeps a good job of that. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'd like to thank the sheriff for being here again today. I took time out of your busy schedule. And Colonel Thomas, thank you for being here with the sheriff. I know when you guys are here, we are safe and we have access to all kinds of resources. So thank you both for being here today. Our IT department received an award today, and I want you to know that I have had conversation with Glenn and the IT department. And those folks don't sleep at night because they always wonder and worried about a potential threat to our computer and our information technology system. So they're always on top of things. They're always finding ways to defeat any intrusion into their system. It's happening everywhere. So and we've been summons to go to some of the other agencies and counties to help them out to resolve their issues. But there's always people out there trying to find a way to get into the system. And as hard as we're working, they're working just as hard to get in. So thank you, Glenn, and I appreciate what you do in the IT department. Domestic Violence Month, that was been mentioned already. Congratulate the ones that's participating to raise money. If you get a chance to participate and help that agency raise money, do so. Paul can tell you, I remember when we didn't have the women's shelter and we had domestic violence situations. And we ended up, as public safety people, actually taking up money from the people that were working just to find safe houses or safe havens for people that were involved in domestic violence. So when that came along, it was really a blessing to have a women's shelter and that sort of operation going on. Don't know how many lives has been saved by putting people in safe haven. I think the manager mentioned the Public Safety Memorial, which will be tomorrow, where we recognize the fallen public safety people. Early voting starts Thursday, the 15th, and some of you already mentioned it, but please go out and vote early if you need to, or wait till Election Day, whichever one suits your desire. We had the opportunity, some of you may have read it on Facebook, but we had, and we're going to probably be doing some more of this, but we had an opportunity to honor a person that had turned 100 years old the sixth of this month. And her name is Virginia Russell Rebus. She turned 100 October the 6th, and she's doing very well. Our manager went down and delivered a certificate for her birthday on that day. And our manager, with her character, was good enough to stop by a flower shop and took her a bouquet of flowers. And she was really pleased, and she's really vibrant. She's really coherent. She's really sharp. She was a World War II. There's tons and tons of information about this lady, but she was born and raised right here. And I think anybody that gets to be 100 or up in that age group needs to be recognized. I hope I can be that age and be recognized one day, but that's something that we'll have to see. Other than that, that's all I have, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.